Adam, I'm going to let people in and then I'm going to come down and give you my cellphone so that we can communicate for when the executive session is. So I'll be there shortly.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Catherine.
Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to this June 10, 2021, Meeting of the Mansfield Board of Education. My name is Kathy Ward. I'm the board chair. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. The public may view this meeting live at townhallstreams.com/town or on Charter Spectrum Channel 191. Public comment may be emailed to mboesupt@mansfieldct.org prior to the second hearings of visitors. Comments may also be mailed to the Mansfield Board of Education for South Eagleville Road. Celeste, would you call the roll, please?
Sure. Susannah Everett?
Here.
Martha Kelly? Edith Allison, we knew. Rebecca Aubrey?
Here.
Dave Luttrico?
Here.
Katherine Paulus?
Here.
Elizabeth Burge?
Present.
Kelly Zimmerman?
Okay, thank you very much, Celeste. Onto approval of minutes. Are there corrections to the minutes of May 13? Any corrections? May I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 13, 2021?
This is Rebecca Aubrey, also move.
Rebecca, would you second then, please?
I'll second Kelly's effort.
Thank you, Kelly. Are there any objections to approving the minutes? Any abstentions? All right, minutes are approved. Are there any corrections to the minutes of June 3, 2021, special meeting? Any corrections? May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Dave. Do I have a second? Do I have a second to approve the minutes?
Second.
Thank you very much, Catherine. Are there any objections to approving these minutes? Any abstentions? Minutes are approved. And now I'm hoping we have some special guests on our Zoom meeting tonight. Is Ben Legasi Bailey First with us?
Yeah.
Hi there, guys. Thanks for coming.
Thank you for having me.
All right, tonight we'd like to make some special presentations, and the first is the Student Recognition CAPE Award. The Connecticut Association of Boards of Education Scholar Leader Award is presented annually to two students who demonstrate the following qualities and characteristics: A concern for others; A willingness to take on challenges; The ability to honor our commitment as well as exhibit exemplary leadership skills. Ben Legasi is a driven student and positive, engaging human being, and is well-deserving of the CAPE Award. Not only is Ben superb academically and well-rounded extracurricularly, but he's also demonstrated exemplary character that truly reflects Mansfield core values. Ben willingly works with a wide variety of peers and is skilled at treating everyone he interacts with as if they are an important member of the school community. Ben recognizes this value in himself as he reflects on his time at Mansfield Middle School. During my middle school years, I feel like I have broadened my view of the world. Through many different experiences, I've learned to try and see the other side of the story, put myself in someone else's shoes. As academically skilled as he is, Ben does not achieve for the sake of praise or recognition. He simply values hard work and self-growth and believes that others have something to offer and teach him. Ben is involved in a wide variety of activities, both within and beyond school. He enjoys sports and plans to continue with soccer, basketball, and track in high school. He's been a member of a variety of clubs and served as a school host in our German exchange program. He's comfortable being both a leader and a listener in these various groups, and his cheerful demeanor is infectious. Ben feels he has grown as a citizen of the world, and his teachers wholeheartedly concur that Ben's achievements are worthy of recognition and congratulations. Congratulations, Ben. Bailey First, CAPE Award 2021. Bailey lights up any room that she enters. You may first notice her smile and quick sense of humor, but then it is her kindness that radiates outward, exuding warmth. No wonder she chose the Sunshine Club as one of the ways to give back to MMS. Her homeroom depends on her storytelling to lift their spirits. She began Zoom homeroom with stories of little-known women. Lately, she shares stories of bobcats and foxes. An expert in all things Star Wars, she is happy to clarify any plot twist or character development, in case you need to know. Bailey's written a novel in her spare time and worked last year as a writing tutor in the write space. Bailey says middle school taught her time management, and she sure packs a lot into a day. She plays basketball for both in-school and outside teams. This year, she joined the school track team and qualified for the state meet in the Discus Throw. A three-year veteran of History Day, Bailey and a partner won first place at the 2021 State History Day competition in the group website category, sending them up to the national competition. They also won a prize for Best Use of Oral History. One thing Bailey does really well is play. One of her favorite middle school memories is performing in the school play in sixth grade, where she loved dancing around as a seagull and looking ridiculous. She now plays around with the costume design in her sketchbook. Playing sports, playing flute, playing competitive four-square, Bailey rocks. Though she wasn't able to perform this year, Bailey won the Becca Baxter Flute Award, an awesome honor. Though her grades reflect the hard work Bailey puts into her studies, she's always up for some fun. Congratulations both Ben and Bailey on winning the CAPE Scholar Leader Award, and congratulations to your families as well.
Thank you.
Wish we could do this in person. Unfortunately, we can't, but we're still so proud of you. Congratulations, and we wish you the very best going forward in high school. And I'm sure you would love to stay because these meetings are terribly exciting, but please feel free to leave the meeting if you wish. Congratulations again to both of you. Next is our recognition of our retirees. Every year, the board likes to recognize those staff members who are moving on to their next life chapter. We wish we could celebrate in person, but we will do our best to make this special over Zoom. Now I'd like to turn it over to Candace Morrell, Principal of Mansfield Middle School.
Good evening. We would like to... Kelly, do you have the slides up? Because I'm not seeing them.
You're on mute, Kelly.
Yep, sorry about that. I'm not the host tonight. I need to be sure that I have screen sharing. I forgot to check on that. There we go. Perfect. Ah, sorry. Okay, now we're ready. Perfect. Well, good evening, and Kelly, if you can go to the next slide. That'd be great. I don't know how to do this. No, it's all good. It's all good. Good evening. We're thrilled to kick off with the Mansfield Middle School in honoring and recognizing Ivy Pomeroy. She was a paraeducator in our Library Media Center for 14 years, and she was just remarkable in everything that she did and always with a smile. So Ivy attended all of our concerts at MMS for 14 years to help with sound and lights, videotaped every graduation all those years, and completed endless summer, an endless number of library bulletin boards and displays, which she was masterful at, and countless hours of moving and setting up equipment. And this past December decided to join her husband in retirement and enjoy the flexibility. We were sad to see her go, but much is what we do at Mansfield Middle School. We also celebrate the next phase of their lives, and so we honor Ivy for her remarkable work that she contributed here, supporting staff and students with all things behind the scene, and we congratulate her on her retirement.
Good evening, everybody. This is Peter Dart from Goodwin. I have the honor and privilege to raise up two amazing educators. And the first person I want to talk about is Barbara Vaughn. For 37 years, 37 years, she has taught Suzuki violin in Mansfield. Take a look at that picture in the upper right-hand corner, because that is proof that she is also a Jedi. She is an amazing person who has touched the lives, and we know, research tells us, what music education, playing an instrument does to the human brain, to achievement, and just a lifelong appreciation of music. I've personally seen concerts and spotted her out even on the Goodwin lawn during the pandemic, making sure that she is connecting with her students. She probably will be most remembered not only for the countless generations of students that have gone through the Suzuki program, but she brought in Mark Wood, who was a founding member of Trans-Siberian Orchestra. And that's, he provided an amazing workshop for five years or five sessions where students got to perform with really a world-renowned musician, and you can see that they had a lot of fun. Barbara also not only teaches, you know that would fill up most people's schedule, but she is an active member of the Hartford Symphony, concert master for the Willimantic Orchestra, plays for the Hop River Chamber Orchestra, and teaches privately in her home. Here she is with David, her kids, two cats. You can see that she is full of life. She is full of service. She's an active member of the Mansfield Board of Appeals. And she has already, I understand, planned five trips for retirement. So as we see the light at the end of the COVID pandemic tunnel, I'm excited for her to venture with her husband Mark, or David, rather, who has also retired and will share a lifelong adventure with their family, with their cats. And I imagine they're still going to be playing. So congratulations, Barbara. While I don't personally know you, when I was doing the research and talking to students and families about you, it was so very clear that you are an amazing gift to Mansfield and to our students. Thank you. And so continuing in this amazing vein of amazing educators, Kristi Hazen is a public educator for 43 years. While she only served one year here at Goodwin, she has decided to retire, but she is an amazing educator, science educator, enrichment coordinator, teacher. She stepped into the very big shoes of Nancy Titchen from last year and really helped us navigate and bridge a transition during a challenging year. In one short year, Kristi brought so many things to Goodwin. First of all, she brought her love of teaching. She is a gentle, passionate person, but she served as our STEM enrichment person. She joined the fourth-grade team. In fact, she called me one afternoon and said, you know what? I understand the class sizes are large. I need to do what's best for kids. And so she stepped up to the plate and joined that team to help us create smaller communities of learners. But in that role, she still was able to develop a PBL unit on bees and pollinators. She discovered this amazing nature trail less than a quarter mile from Goodwin that no one seemed to know about. She partnered with researchers at UConn. She led invention convention for some of our students, and she connected with so many of our community partners. In the lower corner, you see students carrying signs supporting the protection of bees and raising awareness. She understands that her job as an educator, as all of our jobs, is to give agency and voice to our students to make sure that they care about their world and their environment. And it was such a thrill to see those students march as they went off to plant pollinators and native flowers that will help support bees. So I love these pictures because they capture the spirit and essence. And I want to close with just a quote that Kristi shared with the staff when she shared her news of retirement. She said, "I loved working with the invested students, and hopefully they have enjoyed the unique experience of a fourth-grade teacher was also a science nut. The staff at Goodwin are an amazing group of individuals, and I appreciate all the kindness and support you've all shown as a newbie at Goodwin." And so while her tenure was short, her impact on our community was huge. I wish her well, and I know that her partner will spend an amazing amount of time still hiking, biking, and exploring. So congratulations, Kristi.
Hi, I have the chance to talk about Cheryl Hathaway, who after 31 years of service in Mansfield Public Schools and Southeast, she will be retiring. Cheryl has wanted to be a teacher since she was little, and it shows. Her creativity and love for kids are the things that we will think about for always when we think about Cheryl. One of her former students said, "She's so kind, and she makes learning fun." And in her tenure, she was a grade-one teacher for most of her years. She also was a multi-age teacher and took on looping and enjoyed those different challenges. She believes that students should take an active role in the classroom, from plays to problem-solving. A former parent has said Cheryl's patience, professionalism, and love for our children is remarkable. One of the favorite things that we'll remember about Cheryl is how she builds staff climate. She is the place that we go to when we're celebrating anyone and anything. We visit her beautiful garden escape in her backyard, and she will continue to look forward to gardening, decorating, and traveling in retirement, as well as spending time with her daughter and grandchild children. Thank you, Cheryl, for everything. Southeast won't be the same without you. Next, I have the pleasure to talk about Mrs. Mary Davecas. Mary came to us from Wyndham, where she was a kindergarten and reading support teacher, became a teacher at Vinton in the year 2000, and then came to Southeast, where she spent most of her career teaching second grade and then ended her career in third grade. One of Mrs. Davecas's students said, "Mrs. Davecas is kind, and she does her job right. She has a growth mindset," and that was something that Mary had worked on for the last few years in her career. One parent said that Mary knows exactly how far to push my child to get him to be a better student and learn. And I personally got to see that example from Mary as she used data almost better than any teacher I've ever seen. And she used that data to be able to give feedback to her students and really push them to grow. She brought us as a school step-up day and peace one day. And you'll see a picture on the next slide that shows you one of the awesome events where we were able to come together and make our peace sign, and students led that charge with Mary's leadership. Mary currently serves on the new school building committee, and she also has been enjoying taking care of her great-nephew, who's five months old, while she's additionally traveling. While Mary retired last year, we didn't have the opportunity to celebrate her, so tonight is our night to say hats off and thank you to Mary Davecas for your service to Southeast and the Mansfield children over your career. Next, I have the pleasure to celebrate Mrs. Maureen Gagny, who is our cafeteria manager. Three words to describe Maureen: dedicated, conscientious, and creative. She routinely received the staff perfect attendance ribbon each term. I just give those out every quarter, and I don't remember a time that she didn't get one in my years here. She delighted in the special moments and celebrations in the kitchen with decorations, just making it feel special. And in this picture, you see her celebrating on our Thanksgiving feast day, preparing pounds and pounds of potatoes. She will be remembered for the way she treated our staff like a mom and our students, and for her delicious homemade soups. Maureen is an avid reader, and she is currently enjoying reading and spending time with her family during her retirement. Thank you, Maureen, for all the life and love that you gave to us at Southeast. Next, I have the pleasure to talk about Mr. Jim Jenks. Jim is our night custodian at Southeast. He is well-known from our parents and students for his wide array of funny and unique hats that he's collected, which bring smiles to the children at school. His cleaning and work ethic is top-notch and became even more precise with our strict COVID protocols. He is one of the reasons for our great success as a school. Jim, over his time, has enjoyed doing parent pickup and getting to know our families intimately. He's looking forward to having more time with him. He's looking forward to having more time to spend with his wife Bonnie, his seven grandchildren, his 10 great-grandchildren and his two great-great-grandchildren, as well as drumming and enjoying his favorite music. Thank you, Mr. Jenks, for all you've done. He's currently working right now. Thank you, Mr. Jenks. Next, Mr. Mickey Mayhew, a former Southeast teacher who retired and then came back after one year to work with us in our library and we couldn't be more fortunate. He worked side-by-side with Emily Tenell. Mickey not only completed the routine duties of shelving and checking in, checking out books, but this year he had quite a feat. He personally selected books for all the students in school based on their individual reading interests and delivered them. He was amazing at selecting, finding new books for children, pushing them to try something a little different. He always had a story to share with them and a joke. He really brings so much life to our school. And this accomplishment of delivering books, keeping our library open, but still making sure that students had books was one of the things that we were so concerned about with COVID as we are in the early process. But with his creativity, we were able to find a way. Mickey is looking forward to relocating to Maine with his wife Bernie. I sometimes think that they decided to go to Maine because otherwise I might find a way to try to keep him back here at Southeast, but he's far enough away, I don't think I could talk him into it. I can tell you that Southeast School won't be the same without him. And we celebrate Mickey and all of his many years, much more than the four that he's given to us at Southeast. Next, I have the pleasure to talk about Mrs. Carol Lagritaria. Carol was our most tenured staff member at Southeast before her retirement this past January. She has worked in our preschool kindergarten, preschool classroom as a paraeducator for so many years. She has a special connection with children of this age and all their different abilities. Here you see her playing. Some of the small moments that I have when I think about Carol are moments like these where she delights in the little achievements of each student and really makes them just have this glow on their face because they've accomplished something new. She has an incredible amount of love and patience for each child. In her retirement, Carol has been enjoying time with her husband Tony and our preschool classrooms haven't been the same without you. Carol, congratulations on a lifetime career at Southeast and giving so much to our students and staff here. Congratulations. And finally, I have the opportunity to talk about Mrs. Norma LaMonaco. Norma has worked as a paraeducator in our fourth grade for as long as I can remember. She is skilled at supporting our readers and mathematicians, but even more so, she's viewed as a co-teacher to my fourth grade team. She has patience, flexibility and a can-do attitude in all things. Norma is always looking to help our building function the best it can, including stepping in at a moment's notice to help wherever needed with a smile, no complaint and humility. In retirement, Norma is looking forward to having more time with her husband Jim and her three children, as well as learning lots of new things. She's excited for her retirement and we wish her well. Thank you, Norma, for all you've done for us at Southeast.
Hi, I'm Mike Seal and it's my privilege to thank and congratulate two paraeducators with a total years of service of 56 years. Just amazing. And it feels appropriate tonight, this is our Vinton Promotion Night, that we are promoting Judy and Shelley Barnett is the second paraeducator to the next stage of their life. Judy has 23 years of service in Mansfield and she left us in December. She, I think for all the 23 years, she was in pre-kindergarten. And I love this photo to the left where it says, "No lesson that could not be taught." In this lesson, Judy was teaching pre-kindergartners about snowboarding with potatoes and popsicle sticks. And that kind of sums up the PK in Judy Parento. She was a fixture in PK who was just really dedicated to that age group. And in that age group, you have to be a dramatist, a gardener, a mailman, a construction person. They have all these different kinds of, you know, centers for kids and Judy was amazing. So congratulations Judy. I know she's enjoying her retirement since December and her grandbabies. The second paraeducator has been a fixture at Vinton in Mansfield for 33 years. And Shelley Barnett is, I don't know, words can't express. So she has worn every single hat you can imagine. She has been a sweet teacher extraordinaire, just an amazing reading teacher. She has taught MINT, which is a math program for little guys. She's been a classroom paraeducator at every grade probably, substitute teacher, parent, PTA member, et cetera, et cetera. Just a lot of dedication and commitment to Vinton School, the kids and the community. You can't have an exchange with Shelley and not come away laughing. She's just got a profound sense of humor. And words that came up with Shelley are patience, motivation, persistence. There's a nice quote from a teacher and parent here from one of our teachers at Vinton whose children Shelley both had and she was very, very appreciative. And also that teacher mentioned the laughter. So we'll miss both Shelley and Judy. They were amazing teachers, really committed. And really 56 years of service. Many, many thanks to both of you.
Thank you, everybody. I also want to share that I heard from the Mansfield Education Association and they asked that I share with you that they want to celebrate the retirement of teachers this year with a $75 donation in honor of these teachers to a charity chosen by the teachers. And so members of the Mansfield Education Association who are retiring this year include Kristi Hazen, who has asked that her donation go to the Humane Society. Cheryl Hathaway, who has asked that her donation go to the Massachusetts Eye and Ear Center with special thanks to Doctors Jia Yin, Thomas Dolman and Nayong Grace Lee. And Mary Divekis, who asked that her donation go to UNICEF. So I would like to just add my congratulations to all of the retirees who were honored this evening and to thank you very much for your service to the Mansfield Public Schools for just so many years. Thank you.
Kelly, I believe we are still making a donation in retirees' names. Is that correct?
Yes, we are.
Yes. In honor of our retirees, the board will make a donation in each of the retirees' names to the Mansfield Human Services Department, specifically to the Mansfield Farm to Families Program. On behalf of the board, thank you very much for your service to our children and we wish you all the best. And we certainly would understand if you would like to leave the meeting, but you're welcome to stay. And congratulations again. That brings us to our first hearing for visitors. Celeste, have we received any comments?
No, we have not.
Great, thank you. Have we received any communications?
Well, yes, you sort of touched on it. Kathy Ward got a letter to the Board of Education from the Human Services Department talking about the Mansfield Farm to Families Fund and asking for donations. So that's where the idea came for the teachers and I emailed you all that letter today.
Yes, thank you very much. And we do have a request from Catherine to add to the present agenda under New Business, a committee report from EastCon. Catherine, do you want to make that motion? Catherine?
Kathy, can I interrupt? That can go under Board Reports. We still have it on the agenda. It doesn't have to go in as New Business.
Oh, okay.
Perfect.
The EastCon report?
Yep, she can just say, "I have a board report" and that's it. It doesn't have to...
That's great, thank you. All right, well, that brings us to Board Reports. Catherine, do you want to talk about?
Boy, that was quick.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to let everybody know that we have been working on the policies for EastCon for probably the past year and a half, maybe a little bit longer. And one of the things that we are changing is the structure. So in if, maybe a month or two, the superintendent and Kathy will be receiving a letter stating how the thing has changed. It's really exciting. I can't give a lot of information, but it's really opening up the doors for more involvement from districts. So I just wanted to say that a lot of hard work has gone into this and I look forward to sharing more in the future. And Kathy and Kelly, keep an eye out for those letters.
Great, will do. Thank you very much, Catherine. That brings us to Information Presentations and Actions Superintendent Report.
Okay. So new slide deck here. And I have a few things to share with you this evening. June 10th, hard to believe that we have made it, not just to June, but to within one week of the end of the school year. I think you are all aware that our students' last day is a week from today, June 17th. It's been a year unlike any that any of us have ever experienced and we are very grateful to have made it to June 10th as successfully as we have. And I do think it's been a very successful year. And I just want to share a few things in my superintendent's report because I think you know that the incredible efforts that staff have gone to to ensure that our students have as complete a school experience as they're used to, despite some of the strategies that we had to have in place this year and the safety protocols. So this evening, I want to share with you some images from what it looks like the last week or so around the grounds of our schools. One of the things that you know we weren't able to do was indoor music instruction. And much of our individual music instruction and even some of our group music instruction was delivered virtually, usually with students in their homes. So we had instrumental music teachers that were working different hours so that they could be providing instruction up until about eight o'clock for the middle school in the evening. And last week, I believe it was, our beginning instrumentalists were able to perform outdoors for their families at the middle school one evening. We brought students together from across town. And while I don't have a picture of that event, I thought it would be fun to see these elementary school students practicing their trumpets outside at Southeast. There's also a concert this evening, I believe, a strings concert at the middle school this evening. So our strings program has also continued very nicely this year. In the last few weeks, Southeast School did something special this year. Instead of the enrichment cluster program, which often brought many, many visitors to our school, they instead created design challenges. Each grade identified a challenge for others in their grade. Here you see on the left, students developing an outdoor game and on the right, students creating wind chimes. And this was a competitive event that gave students a chance to really engage as problem solvers and creators. Field days continued, not just at Vinton School, but at almost, well, at all of our schools frankly. There was some sort of outdoor community building, fun, creative activity day. Vinton School was lucky enough to get this out of the way before the hot weather came in this week. But that didn't stop the annual bucket over the head. And so you can see on the far right side, it's very hard to see through that water gush, but underneath that water gush is no other than Mr. Seal and the students just delighted in dumping that bucket on his head at the end of the day. Goodwin School held a virtual art show and I believe the other elementary schools also had ways to display art. They started the year with this beautiful display of hearts. Every student in the school adding a heart tile to the wall and ended the year with a review of everything that they had done in art through their visual art show. It's an absolutely beautiful slideshow. I would encourage you to take a look at it. I believe it's on the Goodwin website, but I'd also be happy to send you a link to see it. It's quite phenomenal, not just to see the work of our students, but to read the words of this teacher to understand the curriculum and what goes into our art program. I mentioned the heat. It certainly was warm this week. It required, because of the heat advisories and our un-air-conditioned elementary schools, it did require us to hold a couple of early release days. But instruction goes on and these are students in physical education classes at Mansfield Middle School. They found the coolest way to spend their PE class and that was by hiking through the woods and near the stream. So we did make sure that even in this weather, that instruction continued. This is something that I think is worth sharing with you. I'm very sorry that my schedule did not allow me to be at Mansfield Middle School today where grades five and six competed in their own Amazing Race. I don't know the show well, but I know that there is a show on television called The Amazing Race and I suspect that members of the middle school know the show well and replicated it in this video. Give me one second, I'm going to share this video with you. And I won't play the whole thing, but I'd like to give you a little taste of what our middle school students were introduced to this morning.
Good afternoon, fifth and sixth graders. We are standing in front of MMS, whose halls and rooms have been filled with students for the past 50 years. Each homeroom has been split into two different teams and will be earning clues that will lead you through different challenges and activities today. Can your team work together and make your way through today's challenges? In just a few moments, you will be sent around the school and its grounds with your team.
There will be activities in your classrooms, throughout the halls and even outside. There will be two winning teams, one in fifth grade and one in sixth. The winning teams will get to pie their choice of teacher in the face. Who will be getting pie today? Will it be the GOAT himself, Mr. Goat Donald? The magnificent Mrs. Mosley? The heavenly Ms. Haas? The noble Mr. Nazarko? Or the peaceful PE teachers?
I'll just stop it there for you, but it looked like it was a fabulous day and I just want to commend all of the staff for all of their efforts to make sure that our students experienced the fun and creativity that they're used to at the end of every school year. And we're not done yet. Tomorrow evening, the eighth graders will have their class night. With eighth grader support, it's been planned to be a little bit different this year. It will be a night under the stars and they will be experiencing class night in the courtyard completely decorated and outfitted with lots of twinkling lights. And then next Wednesday, we will have a promotion, also an event to be held outside, a little bit differently than in the past. But really, many thanks to all of the efforts that have gone into ensuring that students experience some normalcy this year. I just had one other thing that I wanted to share with you. Whoops, sorry, gotta turn this off. Find my slides again. I'm not nearly as adept at going back and forth as our teachers have to be with this Zoom thing. So let me get you back and share this. So I did want you to know that the number of students in our remote learning program continues to decline even in the last weeks of school. So the last count that we took was May 31st and I understand from teachers that we even had remote learners returning as late as this Monday. But we are down to only 109 students who are still operating completely remotely. I think it's interesting over on the right-hand side here to see the I think it's interesting over on the right-hand side here to see the class numbers. Our remote learners are certainly getting good personalized instruction as these numbers continue to drop. Went from a high of nearly 28% of students down to 11% of students who have chosen to be fully remote. And again, I believe the reason that these numbers have dropped is because of the efforts that we've taken to provide a safe environment in school. I'm going to stop there. Kathy, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. Does anyone have any questions for Kelly on the superintendent report? Okay, then that brings us to summer programs.
Great. So our learning's not done. We have had, had a lot of fun this year thinking differently about the summer programming. We've been thinking deeply about which students would benefit from extended learning time this year and how best to go about our summer learning experience to ensure that it meets both our academic goals and our portrait of the graduate goals and is truly an engaging experience. And so I asked Shamim Patwa and Candace Morell. Shamim manages the elementary program, Candace, the middle school, to share with you details of what's going to be happening for students in our summer school program. Shamim, as it turns out, was not available this evening. So she put the presentation together and I told her that I would happily share it. So let me tell you about what's happening this summer for elementary school students. So we have invited all students with an individualized education plan. And many of our students who are receiving some sort of intervention support outside of their general education programming to summer school. To date, we have 40 students registered, five of them are pre-K students and 35 in kindergarten through grade eight now. Most of the elementary program students are actually kindergarten through grade three, with some of the fourth graders going on to the middle school, some of them, I think, staying with us. Candace can correct me if I'm wrong. But certainly, some of our multi-handicapped students in the middle school are participating in what we call the elementary or the special education program. So even, don't be surprised by that number 35 is K through eight. That's really 35 students more closer to grades K to three or some fourth graders there. Anyways, our enrollment continues to be open. And Dr. Patwa said that she thought we may have a few more students signing on next week. This program is a change from what we've done in the past, so we've needed to add staff. One of the ways this program has changed is that in the past, students who were not being served as special education students, but those who were just receiving an intervention support, did not come to a full summer school program. They came often three or four times a week for a direct instructional program in literacy, but did not stay for the entire day and experience the full summer school program. This year, we are including those students in the full summer school program. We've added a PE component, so there will be some physical education. We also have added a special writing program that's going to be a connection between writing and visual literacy. I'll tell you more about that in a moment. And we made sure that our students who need one-on-one supports are appropriately supported in summer school. So you can see our staffing here. I'll mention also that these enhanced summer school programs are something that we are able to provide this year due to the use of some of the ESIR funding, which is allotted for, to support students during the pandemic or to support needs that developed because of the pandemic. And so we've used some of that funding to really enhance these programs. The elementary special ed structure, it program starts on July 12th, runs through August 4th. It's four days a week from nine to 12. It begins with a morning meeting in which it gives us an opportunity to provide some instruction in social and emotional learning. There is small group instruction in literacy, physical education, as I mentioned, and direct instruction in reading, excuse me, in writing literacy as well. And then students who require specialized instruction such as OT, occupational therapy, speech language services, or physical therapy will have those programs continued this summer. And as will students who receive very specialized reading instruction or direct, discreet trial instruction, which is often provided to students on the autism spectrum. All of that can continue in the summer school program. Some of the highlights this year is that we've been very actively engaged with Camp Mansfield, offering to parents the second half of the summer school day be spent at Camp Mansfield. So providing every student who's interested an opportunity to have camp. Again, we've worked with the Parks and Rec Department to waive fees wherever we could or to provide all families with reduced fees since they're not attending for the whole day. Another change this year is that we used to ask families to bring students to one of the nearby schools to be picked up and brought to the summer school location. This year, we're providing door-to-door transportation for all students pre-K to eight in both the middle school and the elementary special ed program. All of our summer programming will occur at Vinton this year because Southeast School will be experiencing some demolition. And the middle school will be installing a new roof. So neither of those schools are places for children this summer. And so we've chosen to house all of it at Vinton. I mentioned that there will be a social emotional learning component and a physical ed component. Those are both add-ons from the past, as is the visual literacy program. And that's very exciting. It's going to be taught by a sixth grade literacy teacher who has a degree also in art history and has done some extensive professional learning in this notion of connecting visual literacy to writing. And she's going to be working with the support of the Wadsworth Atheneum to provide a visual literacy-based writing experience for our students. And I do have one other thing that I'd like to share with you before I turn this over to Candace, who will be able to tell you about the middle school program. But one other thing that we're doing for all students this year is that we are allowing all students to take their Chromebooks home for the summer. And that's not something that our students, well, last year, many of them had, had devices with them. But it's, but it's the first time that we've intentionally done this. And so we thought, well, if you're going to have your Chromebook with you all summer, perhaps there are some things you'd like to do on your Chromebook. And so we have prepared this flyer that will be, if it hasn't gone out this week, it will be going out next week and reviewed, I'm hoping, with students in classrooms before it goes. Reminding students and families that many of our educational programs are available to them year round. And many of these educational programs are in an engaging game-like format. And so great opportunity for families to use those Chromebooks and to get on some of these websites. Students know how to access them from the clever button or tab on the Mansfield Public Schools webpage. And then we've identified some additional, very engaging, very creative opportunities for students through some additional websites that can all easily be accessed through this document. And for students who have iPads, because the iPads are staying in school, those would be our students in grades kindergarten and one. They may still like to do some things at home. And so they can use their own device, either an iPad, or they can also use a computer or a device, laptop device from home to access some learning this summer. So I wanted to make sure that we promote this widely because I think it's a great resource for our children to have these Chromebooks all summer. And we'd love to see them use them. So I can take any questions, if you have any now, and about the elementary program. And then I'll turn it over to Candace to talk about the middle school program.
Kelly, I have one question. Will you be able to, I believe you said summer school is going to be at Vinton, correct?
Yes.
Will you be able to make sure it's not too hot for staff and kids?
That's a great question. So we actually own some removable air conditioning units that you can put in windows. And we've checked with Department of Public Health to be sure that those are safe for use. Because there was some concern, if you'll remember at the start of the pandemic, about using air conditioners. And in fact, there are safe ways to use them. And so we will be installing the air conditioning units that we have in classrooms. And again, using grant funds, we, I think we're purchasing either four or five additional units so that we can make sure we have enough spaces that are comfortable for students and staff this summer.
Oh, that's great. Thank you very much. Anyone else have any questions?
Yes.
I just have a comment. Oh, go ahead, Martha.
Go ahead, Martha.
Thank you. I was curious about the social emotional aspects. And is that being worked with, with the special ed, the two special ed teachers?
Yes, and the classroom teachers as well. They've all been doing it all year this year. And so they'll continue with some of those lessons.
Kelly Zimmerman, did you have a question?
I just had a comment. I really like that you are allowing children to keep devices and that you're taking that access to education group over the summer through technology. And I just think that's something interesting to look at in the future. I've advocated to keep that technology position. And I wonder if that's something that over time, there's a possibility of even developing into a year-long position and having that position support some of that summer learning. Because I think there's a lot of opportunity for it. So just wanted to give a plug for that.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay. I've got to switch slide decks again. So Candace, if you want to start to talk, I will find the slides that we need for the next presentation.
Sounds good. Thank you. And so, good evening. We're really pleased to be able to share with you some information about our summer learning program that used to be called MMS Summer School, but we, and then it was Achievement and Challenge. But this year, in rethinking what we wanted programming to be like for middle school students, we've renamed it the Learning Pathway Summer Program. We did some thinking this year and some conversation with Kelly, really thinking through how we can develop a program that's engaging and interesting to students that yet still gets at the skill development connected with content that they need. And so we've looked at integrating math and literacy skills through engaging STEAM learning experiences this summer. Dates for our program are the same as what Kelly mentioned, July 12th through August 5th. Our program's Monday through Thursday as well, but the difference is we are 9:00 AM to 1:30 PM. And really, what I am most thrilled about this year for our program is we are offering door-to-door service along with lunch. Our goal has all along been to think about ways that we remove barriers. And we know particularly at middle school, one of the barriers that we did come across over the years with our summer programming is getting kids to our building. And so we couldn't be more happy to know that that door-to-door service is available. We also wanted to really think carefully about how we build in enriching experiences for students that not all students necessarily have access to in the summer months. And we do believe that through the rethinking of our summer program, we've been able to create just that. Kelly, if you go to the second slide, I'll talk a little bit about structure and staffing. This is a full four-week program. That is different from prior years. And years past, we had students and families commit to two weeks at a time. This year, we've increased that to four weeks. Students will have four and a half hours of instruction a day, four days a week. It's approximately four hours, a half an hour lunch is built in. And each day, students will, all students will participate in two pathway project experiences for approximately two hours each day. We're really thrilled to have, working with us this summer, certified staff, Michelle Mather, Rick O'Donnell, and Arbon Nazarko, along with a non-certified staff member, Mr. Glean, who will support students in this program. And our goal and focus is to really grow and develop skills in a contextualized environment, an environment that lends relevance to the content and skills being developed by our students. All the while, a key piece that we know we have to be mindful of is making it fun. It's essential that kids see the fun in what they do. And so we're really hopeful. We also want to highlight, as we started to rethink this program and redesign, we talked a lot about how do we reshape a program that lifts the five C work of the district while at the same time merges skill development and content in relevant learning environments. And so one of the ways that we were able to do that was we are partnering with the Hartford Stage this year. We are working with them. They will provide us an artist in residence as a co-collaborator who will work with Mr. O'Donnell. And the project work that students will engage in over the four weeks will have a literacy and writing focus. And the work that they're doing and creating is anchored in key common core literacy standards that allows students to work with mentor reading texts, to engage. And then they will develop and write a perform, a short performance that they will perform over the four-week time period. We're very excited about it. We think it balances the right amount of skill development with also the opportunity to be actively involved and engaged and to have quite a bit of fun along the way. If, Kelly, if you want to go to the next slide. The other component of this program that we really looked at is how do we incorporate more STEAM learning experiences? And we've done that in several ways over the four-week experience. We're really pleased to have Michelle Mather and Arbon Nazarko collaborate together for two weeks, the first two weeks of the program. They, students will be able to engage in the use and building and designing of Vex IQ robots. It's going to encourage for them creativity and teamwork, leadership and problem-solving skills while engaging students in complex design challenges that work as much on the process of problem solving as well as building in engineering practices and mathematics. This allows students to have an authentic learning environment and to make connections what we see as future, potential future career options. As part of this work with the Vex IQ robot, students will also learn to do some programming because that's one of the elements that they'll need to do as part of this work with the robots. Another STEAM activity that we'll be involved in actually allowed us to refresh a partnership with a former colleague, Hope Mahaland, who has gone on to pursue all things related to technology in her work. She's partnered with us to develop two, what I call STEAM mini-units that students will participate in. The first one focuses on filmmaking. And we're very pleased to have, this is part of our summer learning experience because students will learn filmmaking strategies while documenting science and engineering projects. They'll learn how to create their own video story. They'll learn from real-world experiences of people that actually do this work as part of their career path. They'll learn the power of storyboard boarding and how important that is and to plan and design their thinking. Another element that students will engage in is graphic design, again incredibly relevant. Kelly, if you want a slide, can move to the next slide. Thank you. As part of this project, students are going to engage with Google Drawings and Pixlr. They're going to learn about, explore how both math and literacy are important to graphic design. And they're going to work on developing an infographic that conveys a message visually. Again, real-world work incredibly relevant that we wanted to make sure students had opportunity to engage with because we know through all of this work of developing skills and connecting to content, we also think it's very important that they see the connection to the world they live in. Kelly, we have one more slide. And as we think about this work and what we're doing with students, we know it's just really important for us to find ways for our students to engage in summer learning that opens opportunities for our students to see the importance and relevance of the skills and concepts that they're building and developing and to see how they're connected to the life that they live in and the work that they will do in the future and be a part of. And we couldn't be more thrilled with the ideas that have come about. And we're excited to see what kids are able to do in this summer program.
Thank you, Candace. Thank you, Candace.
Wow. You only have four weeks, Candace, to do this?
Yes, we only have four weeks.
Holy macro. Will, will you take some of what happens with these experiences and take a look at how you can use that across the board with the, the students come the next year?
Well, yes, absolutely. That's always the plan behind this work. I mean, some of this work is absolutely thinking about um how we grow this and build this out for students. Um, we're really thrilled because some of the teachers involved are obviously our fifth and sixth grade teachers. So I know they're going to bring that back into their classroom. I know that um students will be able to showcase and share some of the work that they complete over the summer with their next-year teachers, and that's very much part of the plan. Um, I will also put in a shameless plug that I intentionally asked Mr. Nazarko to work with Michelle with the robotics because fifth grade actually has the robots because we've had transition in fifth grade. The new, new teaching staff there have never really interacted with them, but Michelle's an expert. And so I call this on-the-job training for something that we want to make sure happens in fifth grade next year. And what a great way to do it. And it just builds in great opportunity for collaboration for adults and students. Um, and we're really thrilled. We have, um, Kelly, I don't know if you want me to speak to enrollment, um, but I can. We have about thirty-four students enrolled uh for our summer program, and that's students going into sixth, going into seventh, and going into eighth. Some years, we do um, you know, take, take on some fourth graders coming up to fifth. That doesn't seem to be a need this year, and honestly, that number is what I call the sweet spot. Our bodies are bigger when we're in middle school. Um, I think that's a good spot. We'll break the group, the students into two groups, and they'll have a morning session and an afternoon session. Uh, but I think they're going to really enjoy these experiences. And my hope is that they see the connection of what they're doing and how this connects to potential future career paths, uh, which I think is incredibly important for middle school students because they are eight years away from college if you start as a fifth grader. So give all the opportunities we can give them to see themselves in the future and what they might do and be passionate about is so important.
Where is this going to be held? At the, at Vinton also, or?
Is this going to be held at Vinton also? We have Mike Steele has been.
During the same time, during the same as, okay, but in different section of the school?
Yes, different sections, different rooms, absolutely, but all at Vinton.
Okay, thank you.
Well, much.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, Catherine, go ahead.
Um, are you doing anything like a, a P E S, like you've done in the past? Kind of to give a, like an outside break to this? Like, in the past, you've done the ropes?
Yep. We're, we're not able to, to build that in this year. Um, it is something that um if we were at our building site, would be easier to coordinate. Um, but we also um, we have a variety of engaging experiences this year, and kids will have break time in between. So when I say two hours in each session, obviously, we're going to build in some break time as well. Um, but this year, the ropes course was not able to happen.
But that's something that would be considered in?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
I, I just, I, I just thought it was so great.
And we would agree a hundred percent. Part of the limitations is um some of our staff access this summer that are trained on the ropes course. And honestly, it also, I know, while I know Vinton has some of the ropes course, just not having access to our site this year makes it a challenge as well.
Yeah, thank you.
This is much to your credit and your staff's credit for all of the planning that it obviously went into that, Candace. Uh, very different than we'll just have some basic reading, writing, and math classes. Uh, much to your credit. Very nice job. That's.
Thank you.
I'm forward to hearing how, how this goes.
We will update you. We'll be thrilled to update you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else have any comments or questions?
I just wanted, Kathy, I just wanted to also mention that although I don't have a full report for you now, we will in the, the fall certainly. But as I shared in our workshop last week, there's also a whole um plethora of um professional learning experiences being offered to staff this summer. So we view summer as an opportunity for learning, not just for students, but for staff as well. And, and I know you know about many of these things, but you know, two sessions of the Equity Institute, um Math Book Club, um sessions to support the development of more project-based learning units. Uh, and um, of course, our curriculum teams will be coming back together in August to do some, some more work as well. So it's going to be a busy summer for a lot of people.
A good busy.
A good busy, right.
A good busy.
Will the middle school students also be keeping their Chromebooks and tablets and be given the information about um sites they can visit to uh enhance their learning?
Yes.
What you said about?
Okay.
Yes, I mean, that's the, one of the bright spots is um all middle school students will be keeping their Chromebooks. They, that communication about how they might use their Chromebook for some of these sites and activities over the summer has been shared with them and their families today. Um, and we see that as a positive that they get to keep their Chromebooks. Our students attending the summer learning pathways will bring, will be bringing their Chromebooks with them each day. Um, in addition, we're using some of the iPads we have in a couple of our classrooms to do the graphic design and the filmmaking. And I will put in a shameless plug that, that video that Kelly showed, all of the drone work was done by one of our seventh-grade students. And the mastermind behind The Amazing Race, which I have to just indulge for a moment, was a former student who is an eighteen-year-old para educator in our building this year. And she dreamed that up and came up with ideas, and people just said, yep, we want to do this. And it was hands down the most incredible experience. Um, I think several students in fifth grade said, this is the best day of my life. And so it was, it was great.
Anything else? All right, then we can move on to the ESER grant update.
Sure. Hope you guys aren't getting.
Continuity of learning, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Kathy?
Yeah.
Are we going to talk about SOAR and is Lynda Robinson running Dr. Robinson?
Hold on a minute. There's one, there is one more slide.
There's one more slide, we're sorry.
Can I ask a quick question as we make this transition? Was that a fox that was running across the, in the?
Yes. So this is our little story. So we used to have a family of baby fo, of fox family that had babies every year that used to be in our peace garden. And if you came into work early, you would see them. Well, this year, Bill Treach let me know that they, two families have migrated over to Department of Public Works. But every day, we see them play or migrate up into the woods and back. So John was able to get the fox on drone video. So sweet.
Very cool.
They've been very sweet. But um anyways, I will jump into SOAR. So yes, this year, we are um pleased to say that we have our, our SOAR Summer Online Adventures in Reading program up and ready to roll. Um, we're so appreciative of the work that Dr. Robinson does to keep this program running. And so students are going to be engaged in this event, um, reading the challenges to read daily from June twenty-first to July thirtieth. Um, they're going to keep a log, a record log, um, to earn online badges. Um, she has coordinated five book-borrow library nights that will happen on Mondays um up through July twenty-sixth. Kids will come here to access, um, pick up and exchange good books. Um, and then they're going to engage with teachers. Um, they're going to create posts on a pamphlet, um, you know, and engage with uh other peers as well through this program. And then um they're going to share in their, their recommendations about books to read. Um, we're looking at how to celebrate um and have some celebration gatherings this summer where we come together outside. Um, and we're just thrilled that it's another nice way um to keep our kids um in grades five through eight engaged, reading, and connected. And we're really appreciative to Dr. Robinson, Mrs. Zawadny, Mrs. Davis, Mrs. Marcus, and Mrs. Jobes because they're all engaged and, and promoting this work with our children this summer.
And my apologies for skipping past that slide.
Uh.
Brought it up.
Are we up for uh ESER grant update and continuity of learning?
I'm ready.
Alrighty.
Uh, so as I have the last couple of months, I just want to give you an update on where we are with the multiple um uh federal grants. Uh, we, as you know, submitted a, a grant uh back in, I think it was April, mid-April, um, for the ESER two funding. It was a total of four hundred thousand, six hundred thirty-four dollars. Since our last board meeting, we have received word that our grant application was approved. Uh, and so in that grant, I just want to reiterate for you, there are programs to support um teaching and learning uh moving forward as well as recover some of the funds that we spent this year um due to um the, the COVID protocols and other restrictions. So moving forward, there's money in this grant for the Technology Integrationist position uh for the Enhanced Summer School Program, including transportation and air conditioning, as you heard us uh discuss tonight, and additional technology, both hardware and software, so we can keep up these great um uses of technology. Uh, to support funds, uh replacement of, of funds that needed to be spent this year, the ESER two monies will cover all of the um cost of cleaning supplies, those things that we, that we wouldn't typically purchase. So for example, this year, we had to purchase some additional disinfectant um uh cleansers uh on top of the, the, the regular cleansers that we usually purchase. We had to purchase a lot of hand sanitizer uh and um, and as well as some PPE, like, you know, additional gloves and those kinds of things. Uh, that's all been covered. All of our custodial overtime has now been covered, and we were able to make a significant contribution to our food service program uh as you heard um last month um about the deficit that they were running. Uh, and I know that EO Smith has used their ESER grant um also to make um a significant contribution to the food service program. So I'm pretty um excited that, that we were able to use ESER um two funds to support both current expenditures and those going forward. Now, when it comes to the um next round of funding, which you'll remember is called ARP, American Rescue Plan ESER, I shared with you last month these multiple procedures. The first were the set of assurances that I need, needed to make um by May twenty-fourth, and I'm happy to say that those are done. I'm currently working on what's called the Safe Return or Continuity of Services Plan. It must be up on our website by June twenty-third, and it must have undergone a period of public comment prior to its uh publication. And I'll share more uh details about that with you. And then finally, I'm organizing the work that needs to happen for the grant application, which we now know is due August sixteenth uh and requires um uh multiple stakeholders um to be engaged in the development of that plan. But it builds off the needs assessment that we had to conduct for the ESER two funds. Also, I'll remind you that in our ESER in this round of funding, we're looking at seven hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred eighty-one dollars, and we have three years um to spend that money. So I just want to tell you about the Continuity of Learning Plan um and um let you know that the state uh requires that you identify both health and safety strategies and continuity of service details. So uh health and safety are mitigation strategies, like mask-wearing and distancing, uh contact tracing practices, our diagnostic screening efforts, and our vaccination efforts. And then the continuity of services are how, discuss how you're going to continue to meet academic needs of students, especially any students who suffered um uh learning loss during um this time, and uh how you address students' social, emotional, and mental health needs as well as um other um student health or food service needs. Well, we're, we, we've got a pretty good plan. Our reopening plan that we published last August, which was created with stakeholder engagement and which there was opportunity um to hear from the public uh about, um, that plan has a lot of health and safety measures in it. So we're going to build off that reopening plan as we um revise it essentially um to become our continu, continuity of learning plan. I will say that one of the challenges is that by June twenty-third, not a whole lot is going to have changed with regards to mitigation strategies. The executive order, for example, to wear masks will still be in place. We don't know if that's going to be the case by the time we come back next um late August. But for now, we need to continue to include all of those strategies in our, our plan. We suspect we're going to have to update this plan actually before school opens again uh next fall. Um, we have very clearly established contact tracing uh plans in each school. When we learn of an infectious uh community member now, we uh within sometimes ten or fifteen minutes have identified uh everybody who may have been a close contact and can immediate, can immediately act to um contain and keep those people safe as well as others in the building. So um we did not have any of that in our first reopening plan. We learned that this year. So we'll include that in the continu, continuity of learning plan. Uh, and likewise, diagnostic and vaccination efforts are all new since we last wrote a plan, and all of that's been done in collaboration and with the cooperation of Eastern Highland Health. There's not going to be a whole lot of change to our um continuity of learning plan as it relates to supporting students. Our plan already has uh lots of strategies in it for ensuring that students with special education needs um can, have continual supports. And there's a lot in our plan about um efforts to address social, emotional, learning, and mental health as well as equity needs. What is new is our Enhanced Summer School Program. So our uh next plan will have a little more detail about our summer school plan. And we do need to update the uh models section of our reopening plan. You may remember last August, when we put our plan together, we had to describe when and we would be in, fully in-person or hybrid or fully remote, and what each of those models would look like. We know that now the only plan that we will be putting forth um for the future is a full in-person model. So we will remove those um three models from the plan because our continuity of learning plan uh will be focused on a full in-person model with students attending school five days a week. So again, I need to make sure there's some opportunity for the public to see this and provide written feedback before June twenty-third. And it needs to be updated every six months. I put a little asterisk next to June twenty-third because I do expect, as I mentioned, that we will need to update this um again just prior to the, oh, sorry, that got moved over, just prior to the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Um, so I believe that's all I, oh, no, one more thing. Um, the other thing, I shared this with you last month. This has not changed. This is still how we're expecting to use the funds in these three focus areas. Uh, and we will be developing the, the specifics as well as the budget um for um these defined focus area, areas in order to complete the application for August sixteenth. And we expect this work to begin in earnest uh in um early July. So I'm going to stop there and see if you have any questions.
Been a little busy, have you, Kelly?
Yeah, I got a lot, a lot to do before June twenty-third still, but it, it will get done.
Just a rough idea of how much we did recover the cafeteria fund?
Yes, uh, I believe it was fifty-seven thousand, I think about fifty-seven thousand.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's great.
And uh I, I, I think EO is a little more than forty thousand, maybe?
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, I know we don't have any meetings scheduled for the summer, but I'm, I'm thinking maybe we should be prepared to meet situations arise due to COVID-related issues. Everyone just be prepared?
I think, I think that's a great idea, you know, um. I've, I've mentioned before, we have these Tuesday morning calls with the Department of Public Health and, you know, how incredibly helpful they've been to us. And we've been asking for two months now for information on reopening school. And understandably, you know, they're, they're telling us, we don't know what's going to happen three weeks from now with this virus. So it's hard to help you now plan for the reopening. And, and again, um, we, we certainly do understand that. It doesn't make our work easier, but we do understand. And so I think um three months ago, they would have uh expected us to continually be riding uh the waves of coronavirus. What we're seeing is that the vaccination has been so successful in Connecticut that um in fact, we are not riding the waves uh of the virus, but we are on a continual downward trend. And the message to us And the message to us this past Tuesday was very interesting. Not only did they highlight the value of vaccinations and the importance of making sure that all of our students become vaccinated as soon as they're able, but they shared with us, and I've seen this in news reports since, that coronavirus is actually the worst it's been since the pandemic began right now. We're not experiencing that in the United States, but other parts of the world are. I heard this morning that yesterday, sixty-four thousand people died in India of COVID-19. And so that was the point that was being made, is that while the U.S. and parts of the EU are doing well, many parts of Asia, like India, Vietnam, Thailand, and many parts of South America are really struggling. And the variants of the virus there, where they don't have access to the vaccine, are stronger variants and more infectious. And so again, it just highlighted the real value of the vaccine, both of the vaccine and the value of us continuing to stay on top of this because we don't know what's going to happen next.
Okay.
A question talking about vaccinations and vaccinating twelve-year, I think it's you can do twelve-year-old and up. Are we gonna, excuse me, is there talk of school-based vaccination clinics?
We've already held two. One was held at Tallinn High School and the other at Coventry High School. They were held in collaboration with Eastern Highland Health, but offered by UConn. Eastern Highlands does not have the capacity to store the Pfizer vaccine, so Eastern Highland cannot offer the clinic, but UConn can offer Pfizer. And so we partnered with them for those clinics, and all of our families are made aware, and we've been asking families to notify us when their children are vaccinated because if you're fully vaccinated and you're exposed, you don't have to quarantine. So when we do contact tracing, it will be helpful for us to know who's already vaccinated.
And this is the cutoff, this is twelve-year-old and older, this population?
Right, so you've probably seen reports that Pfizer is studying the vaccine in under twelves right now, and I've heard everything from early fall to mid-fall as to when that might be available for children.
Anyone else? Okay, we can move right into enrollment update, forecast for twenty-one, twenty-two?
Yes, and I have another few slides that I'd like to share with you. I hope you're able to follow this. So I want to alert you to what's happening with enrollment at the elementary schools. You know that each year, when we devise our budget, we also engage in a staffing and enrollment study so that we can ensure we're putting the correct number of positions, staffing positions in our budget. And in order to do that, we look at the enrollment study that we have Peter Prouder do, we look at actual enrollment, and principals use their knowledge of sort of, you know, the ebb and flow of ins and outs that they've experienced historically. When we conducted our study in preparation for the budget, at Southeast, for example, we anticipated in kindergarten about eighteen students, excuse me, in pre-K about eighteen students, in kindergarten about twenty-two students, and so on, for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. As we look at actual enrollment, June seventh, right now, you can see that, you know, it wasn't an exact prediction. We've got more kindergartners than we thought. We've got, you know, pretty much about the same other where, other places. But the kindergarten number was hard this year because we knew there were some families that held their child out for a year because of COVID. We didn't know exactly how many that may account for the increase that we're seeing here. But the good news is, in a school like Southeast, because she didn't really believe this twenty-two was the spot-on number, we kept two teachers in kindergarten. And now with thirty-two students, two teachers is an appropriate number of staff with class size projected at sixteen each, well within the board guideline. Southeast looks like they're in pretty good shape as far as our staffing predictions. Move to Vinton School. Vinton School experienced that bump in kindergarten also. They were anticipating about twenty-eight students, and they already have forty-four students enrolled. They had only staffed for two teachers in kindergarten. Two teachers and forty-four students in kindergarten is going to be well above your board guidelines with twenty-two students in each classroom. By putting three teachers in kindergarten, you still have three classrooms that are within board guidelines. And so I'm recommending that we add a third teacher to the Vinton kindergarten. But bear with me for a moment because we've got a situation at Goodwin also that is, we're not quite sure how it's playing out. Goodwin also has more kindergartners than projected, still well within guidelines. In fact, with only nineteen kindergartners projected, we still staffed it at two because we just knew nineteen wasn't the right number. We knew there'd be more. Well, we had twenty-one students projected in first grade, and again, the assumption was they're going to be more first graders. Well, we're not really sure. We've got a count that's moving week by week. We've got some students moving on and some students calling to make inquiries that they think they're going to be moving here. So right now, we've got somewhere between twenty-one and maybe twenty-five teachers that are, excuse me, students in Goodwin. If we stay down around the twenty-one or twenty-two level, we can manage that with one teacher and some extra support. And so that one teacher that we don't need in grade one at Goodwin can become that extra teacher that we do need in kindergarten at Vinton School. But there is a possibility that as the summer goes on, the number in first grade might look more like twenty-five, in which case we will need to keep two teachers at Goodwin. Now, the reason I'm sharing this with you is because this year, we did not include a contingency teacher in the budget. However, we have had two retirements that we did not know we were going to have when we crafted the budget. And we also have some changes in our paraeducator staffing, again, due in large part to the number of retirees among our paraeducators. So I think our staffing budget will allow for this additional teacher, but I wanted to alert you to the fact that that could happen over the summer, and especially if we don't have a summer board meeting, I wanted you to know that I may be adding that position at some point this summer. So I'll take questions or comments if you have any on that.
Okay, I guess we can keep rolling along.
Yeah, I have a question. Are we assuming that all of the remote students will be in the classroom? Or do you think maybe some of them will stay as homeschoolers? Do you have an idea?
Interesting question. Just knowing who the students are, they're not families that have ever expressed an interest in homeschooling, and we've not received any requests, there's paperwork you have to fill out, we've not received any requests. So yeah, I'm hoping they're going to come back.
Anyone else?
No, just thanks for keeping up. It just seems like always a difficult, I know we'll be better when we're all in one building, we'll be easier to move around, but it just seems complicated, and I know the housing market is very hot right now in Mansfield and like everywhere else, but yeah.
Well, and the other thing that we don't know yet is what's going to happen with international travel, and if international students, if there's an opportunity for the university to receive international students, and more importantly, their families to travel to the U.S., then that could increase our numbers as well. And I think you probably saw on those charts that there are very, very few grades in any school that are topping out the board guidelines, so there's certainly room for more enrollment. But this is where we're experiencing what happens when you get really small, is you don't have quite enough students in one school, but if you could put them all together, it would be just perfect. So we've got one more year before it's just perfect.
Anyone else? Okay, M M S roof project update?
Yeah, the construction team and our facilities team and administrators from the middle school did a walkthrough last week and identified everything that they needed to for construction to begin as far as how the site will be impacted. I know that materials have been ordered. There's great concern about the availability of construction materials. I saw one email exchange among the groups about one material that they were a little concerned about, but they found a workaround. So as far as I know, we are on schedule for the roof, although it will, they will not begin the roof for another about week and a half or so, I believe. So so far, so good with the M M F, M M S roof, but it's something we're going to have to keep a really close eye on this summer because the timeline is tight.
Question.
Sure.
The, because supplies are supposedly skyrocketing, how is that going to affect? I mean, are we gonna be impacted by that, or is that just up to the contract that was signed?
For the most part, it's up to the contractor and the contract that we, yes, have signed. And we came in pretty significantly under budget, so I think we will be fine.
So they won't expect us, if there's an overage, for us to come up with that?
My understanding is if it's super substantial, and they may have the opportunity to come back and try to renegotiate, but every time I ask that question, I don't get a clear answer. I think even if, like worst-case scenario, there was some allowance for them to come back and try to renegotiate the contract, the project has money in it, you know, because it's under budget, but no one has expressed concern about that at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
That's for both the elementary school and the middle school roof project, correct, Kelly?
Yes. Yeah, the elementary project, it's such a much bigger project that the few conversations that I've had with the construction team there, because, you know, they use a lot of subcontractors, you know, once you make your bid and sign the contract, that's it. Yeah, I think we're pretty safe.
In terms of the elementary school project, the school building committee met earlier today. Fencing's going up tomorrow, and the land clearing will begin. Kelly, correct me if I've got any of this wrong. We set June twenty-fourth at three-thirty for ground baking ceremony.
Got it.
Once school is out, we'll begin packing up the portables and prepare for demolition on June twenty-eighth. And the subcommittee's been formed to look at a feature wall, to look at what special features from each building we wish to preserve and display in the new building. We're expecting, I believe we're still waiting on D O T approval for improvements on the intersection of one ninety-five and eighty-nine, but expecting that soon, and then the work can begin. And so far, this project's on schedule as well.
Kathy, can you please repeat the date and time of the groundbreaking?
June twenty-fourth at three-thirty. We'll get some more information on that once.
Invitations will be going out to all board members, if not tomorrow and early next week.
Yeah, we just set the date tonight, so. Any questions? Pretty exciting, I'd say. That brings us up to our second hearing for visitors. We received any comments?
No.
Thank you. Do we have any suggestions for future agenda items? Okay, then let's go on. May have a motion to accept the consent agenda. Thank you, David. Do I have a second? Thank you, Susanna. So are there any objections to approving the consent agenda? Any extensions? All right, that's approved unanimously. And now executive session.
Kathy, before you take a motion to go into executive session, may I share one other thing?
Certainly.
There is somebody on the screen for whom this will be her last board meeting, and she will not allow me to say anymore, but I just wanted to acknowledge this Celeste's service to this board and to us and me, and all the care that she's taken for so many years.
Thank you, Kelly.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Celeste.
Thank you, Celeste.
Thanks, everyone, it's been a blast.
Thank you, Celeste.
I wish I could send the heart that Rebecca sent you.
Thank you, Celeste. All right.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. I'm sorry, we had a motion to go, did we? I can't re-
Yeah. I interrupted you.
Make the motion, we go into the executive session and invite Kelly.
Catherine, I apologize. Susanna has the motion, correct? Oh, no. No.
I, no, I have the motion. I have enough.
Okay, so the motion is to go into executive session to discuss superintendent's evaluation, superintendent contract, and non-union salary and wages.
So wait a minute, who made it, Catherine or Susanna?
Catherine.
I seconded it, I think.
Susanna is the second. So are there any objections to going into executive session? All right, then we will go into executive session at eight-thirty-seven, and I will call to get the live stream off. Thank you very much, Kelly.
Thanks, everybody. Have a nice evening.
And the superintendent, correct?
All right, we're good, Kathy.
Well, we're good. We were out of executive session at 9:06 PM.
Got it.
Okay, and Susannah, could you read the first motion, please?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to accept the Personnel Committee's recommendation of Singleton and superintendent salaries for 2021-2022. The administration, I'm sorry, the administrative assistant to the superintendent's salary scale will remain as is. All other singletons, in parentheses, four ITs, one food service director, and HR, human resource specialist, will receive a 2.5% increase. A one-time $2,500 market adjustment will be applied to the salary of the human resource specialist. Insurance cost sharing for singletons is 13%. The superintendent was awarded a 3% salary increase with a 15% insurance cost sharing.
Do I have a second?
I'll second, this is Rebecca.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Who did the first, was that Susannah, right?
Yes. And then Rebecca?
Do we vote?
Anyone have any objections to approving this motion? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Let's wait for Martha, you okay? Okay, Susannah, would you read the second motion, please?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to extend Superintendent Kelly Lyman's contract for one year, July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024.
I'll second, Rebecca.
Let Martha catch up, Rebecca seconded Martha, good? Okay. Anyone have any objections to approving this motion? Are there any abstentions? All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you again to the Personnel Committee for all your work and diligence and thoughtfulness around all of these pieces.
It's fun, it's a fun year. All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Catherine, how about you second? David made a motion to adjourn.
Fine.
And Catherine seconded? Any objections? All right, unanimous, we're adjourned at 9:10. Thank you very much, everyone, thank you, thank you, thank you for all your work.
Thank you, was that Celeste's, like, 22nd year of board meetings?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, my goodness, that's amazing.
All right, thanks again, everybody, have a great night.
Bye, have a great night, take care, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks Martha.
Okay, you're welcome, goodnight.